December twenty first and I call this meeting of the Brookfield Select Board to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And we are still good. So, announcements. This meeting is being recorded. I know of two, our usual recording from Sharon. And we have another recording going on by Citizen. I think it's going out on Facebook. So, you guys saw us try and start the meeting at least two or three times. Let's see. Reminder, winter parking ban is in effect from now through April first. No parking on any streets between eleven PM and six AM. Vehicles in violation will be ticketed code at the owner's expense. So, and as you move from driveway sidewalks and private property shall not be plowed, shoveled, or blown across any public ways, street, or roadway. And I believe way includes sidewalks. One other announcement is that the town has just been notified that our portionment of the fair share amendment is a hundred two thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars. And does anyone here know how that, is that just effectively grant money we can do anything with? Is there any rules on it, or is that something that we're gonna have to wait?
That's the first time I've ever seen that fair share, so I don't know.
So, well, it looks like, it looks very specifically, just from the letter, that it will be incorporated as additional funds into chapter ninety.
Oh, yep. I see that now, a little further down.
Yeah, so that, so we would receive it however we, and typically, chapter ninety is received as reimbursement. So, it would go against our totals for chapter ninety and then, as we expend chapter ninety, we'd be able to functionally claim the money.
Okay, it's, so it funds the same things that the chapter ninety money does, and I believe that's road money?
Yes.
And so, that's in addition to the?
Yeah, that's in addition to the standard apportioning of chapter ninety money. This is like above and beyond money that comes from the surcharge tax, the surtax.
Well, I won't say no. All right, and Brad, would you read the warrants for us?
Yeah, FY twenty-four twelve payroll, hundred eighty-eight thousand, sixty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. FY twenty-four twelve withholding, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents. FY twenty-four twelve accounts payable, hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and sixty cents. FY twenty-four thirteen payroll, hundred ninety-three thousand, seventy dollars and seventy cents. FY twenty-four thirteen accounts payable, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
All right, thank you, Brad. All right, on to the agenda. First item is the report from the interim highway supervisor. Gary, would you join us?
I am here.
All right, could you sit up here? So that the, so that the cameras have a better chance to see you.
We're gonna put a target on me?
Also, we're trying to be, we're trying to be a little more formal in that people participating in the meeting with this Select Board will be sitting up here. And then that way, it's a, it's a little more deliberate.
Okay.
If not deliberate.
Fair enough, and nice to be here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you almost just, I think you're just finishing your fourth week? Or third? I can't remember.
Fourth, I think.
Fourth week. Okay, yeah, you started at twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so a few things. Obviously, I've talked with you, Tom, and also with Kelly and the others, I think, received the information regarding Willow Brook. So, I did reach out to the Bridge Division of Mastaut, and they were very helpful. Their big concern was, do we have to put anything back in its place? My answer to them, my response, unless the board objects, was no, we can leave that open. But we would recommend putting B-rail across that entrance. They asked if there was another entrance available to that area, which I said yes. On the west of the end, there is another entrance available. So, they're going through it. I mean, Audubon is involved, Mass Wildlife, DCR, obviously, and Mastaut, Highway Division. So, I've dealt, talked directly with the Bridge folks. Very helpful. Once the holidays are over, they said they certainly have something for me.
Okay.
Well, to do with that, I also looked at another site further upstream today with Brad, which leads, if the dam was breached successfully, would lead into the other culvert, which is on the west end of that old Route Niner, which then became a rest area. I have inspected that before and there was no obstruction there. So, I think that'd be a good flow, and I told Brad I'd be walking through there next week to see if I can breach it. And Brad said he had a permit.
Yeah, we got the emergency permit today. And I went out myself and dug open a path and it alleviated the issue. She's got no water coming over to her property.
Good, good.
It's going down between my property, which is where it's supposed to go, instead of flooding the other rest.
That's an obvious problem. It does go down through there, so we might fill it up a little bit for a little while.
Right.
See if we can get it to dissipate, so.
Oh, that's a, that's a Bieber issue near you and the Gene Levell's house?
It's been for like twenty-five years. That's what's been flooding her out.
So, I'll let, I'll let everybody know, obviously, how I make out when I go out there. Also, I was, through Kelly, contacted by National Grid for their upcoming construction season to see if we had anything that was in the offering for road construction, so they can plan their repair work or replacement work, if you will. The only thing that I told them about was Kimball. So, Kimball is a CDBG, so I understand it's approved. I understand it has got to bid. That is, I think it'd be the only thing that would affect any National Grid lines. The only other road construction project I looked at, and I actually measured it, was Gay Road. And there's no underground utilities up there. Most of it doesn't even have power overhead. So, I guess the bigger part is to see when they plan on constructing, because the last thing we want to do is construct a road and have any utility have to go in the following season and dig it up. So, there's a lot to make sure. We've had to put things on hold in other areas that I've been involved with for that reason. So, I'll stay on top of that, because, and I believe you all know that the engineering and design portion of that will still come onto our chapter ninety. The rest is all, I believe, through CDBG.
Oh, the construction, we have a grant for, but the engineering is?
Yeah.
We have to take it by us.
Okay.
Right, right. So, once that goes out to bid and we have those prices, we'll have a better grip on it. And as long as I mentioned Gay Road, I did measure it. And from the last bid prices I got from another area, because we don't have any here right now, it would cost about, with contingencies, four hundred thousand dollars to do that stretch of road. Excuse me, that's one point five miles along, twenty-four feet wide.
Is that from the corner of Rice Corner?
Right, you'll see the seam. There's a seam in maybe, maybe a hundred feet, and that would be all the way to the town line.
Yeah, that particular stretch of road is pretty bad.
It's constant upkeep, constant pothole repair, icing, obviously. So, it comes to about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a full-depth reclamation and four inches of bitcon. So, I've put in, or just haven't put in, I'm just thinking about an additional, to bring it up to about four hundred thousand for contingencies, for replacement of culvert pipes, and certainly drainage. Drainage's a big problem out there. So, and that's just my thought to the board. Certainly, right now, we have, I think, two hundred and forty thousand dollars available in chapter ninety. And that's what this year's, that's not including, what you mentioned.
This'll add another two sixty left.
Right. And then next construction season, by when you have town meeting, you'll approve probably roughly a hundred and sixty-seven, which will put you right at about what it would cost to do Gay Road. We still have to take and remember the engineering and design for Kimball. So, we don't want to break the bank. That's your checkbook. So, I'm just bringing that to the board's attention. Okay?
We might want to talk to Kathy and give her heads up that we want to start looking for possible grants sources to help with that.
The problem, I think, because I've asked about this early on, was it's not, I guess, there's not enough traffic on it to really?
I guess the question is, have we done it? So, have they even done a traffic study there recently? Because that's a, that's a?
Cut through.
Well, what I was gonna say is, it's a commuter, it's a commuter pipeline down into Sturridge. Like, it's one of three major means that people get from Brookfield to Sturridge.
Oh, yeah, and it's being used more frequently, especially because of the bus traffic for tantas.
Exactly. I think one of the, I think part of the approach needs to be, and doesn't the, don't the police have like a traffic counter they can put out?
Yeah, generally, I used to, I call the state for a traffic count. If they took exclusions for anything of that matter, then the state comes in at no charge and gives you a traffic count for whatever the reason may be.
Yeah, yeah. Would you mind coordinating that for that stretcher road?
Okay.
Because that way, it'll, it'll help us advise, if we haven't had a traffic, an official traffic count done in a while, it may, it may enable some of the?
Okay, sure. I'll look at that. Thank you.
And then, and you're right, Kathy should, because the season for that grant money should be coming soon.
Right.
I mean, we've probably missed one cycle at least by now, but usually, there's a couple more out there. I know we tried to get federal money for, I want to say it was a combination of Gay Road and maybe Molasses Hill Road. I think they tried to get both of them onto a single grant for like a one point two million dollar grant a couple of years back. And I, we didn't, we didn't finish or finalize.
Okay.
So, or like, we got it put in, but we didn't get the grant money. But that doesn't mean that there's maybe not an opportunity now to see if we can supplement it. The other thing is, it's for a four hundred K project, if we had to, we had pretty robust free cash come back. We may be in a position to just fund the difference, rather than break the bank on the chapter ninety.
I agree. Let's see, let's see what our options are and think about how we want to propose this and if we need to put anything on to the warrant town meeting.
Yep.
Even if we just used half of one of our stabilization funds, that might be, that might be prudent. We'll see. I mean?
It wouldn't make any sense to use a stabilization fund based on what we have coming back for free cash. We've got seven hundred K in free cash coming back. There's no way we should be breaking into stabilization.
You are correct, Beth. Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm getting out of this.
We are, so.
I'll look into that. Pastor, thank you for that.
Yep.
Couple of things. I have opened and reached out to the school district and have had conversations with both the superintendent, transportation manager, and that's just for the event of a storm situation. So, we know if there's gonna be a delay or a closure, so. Anyway, productive conversations. We're on the same page, so just wanted to let you know that that has happened. I did have the common street signs made. I had them made two-sided.
Okay.
For no parking. I understand, and I did have the area dig saved. Now, you already had three signs out there. The problem with them is, was they, is they were not double-sided. So, you really couldn't see them. And people know they're there, but you couldn't see them unless you pulled them up.
The one in front of the library is facing the southbound traffic, and it's gotta be telling the northbound traffic to hand park.
Right, so I got it two-sided, so you could see it going up and down the road. But now, here, there are some questions about that from the library.
The library, in consultation with the historical commission and maybe someone else, they have some concerns, and I reached out to, I reached out to Brenda, and I got a tracker down.
Okay, all right.
I was running errands today. I'll probably try and catch you tomorrow, just to catch up with it before the?
Okay, and I'll wait till that, any issues are cleared up, obviously, before we just go out and start popping signs in the ground.
Yeah, I would say, at this point, let's hold off and see what concerns they have and whether, how easily they can be addressed.
Okay, and I'm speaking of the common, because we're in the area, is it the town's intent to leave the birthday cake up? Or do you want to take it down at the end of the year?
No, it's, yeah.
I think, who put the birthday cake up? Was that cultural?
Yeah, but the highway department brought it up, I believe.
But it was at, but effectively, the cultural council requested it be done.
Right.
And so, I mean, I would say that, I would say, I expected it to come down. I don't see a reason to keep it up, and so?
Where does it get stored?
We, it was East Brookfield, and they, East Brookfield gave it to us. So, I think what we want to do is, we want to find out which town in the nearby areas having a birthday and ask them if they want it. There you go. It's like, reduce, reuse, recycle.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, we can't take it off with the saturation that we've had recently. I'm not gonna put big ruts in the common, so I have the way the ground freezes, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so.
I think, I think at this point, it's reach out to Bill Simpson and the cultural council and as a, let them know that we're, that we've asked the highway department to remove it after January first and when conditions and scheduling permits.
Okay, sure.
It's low priority.
Although, saturated ground would be a good time to get the sign the heck out of the ground. The sign, the sign that we said we were gonna remove?
Oh, you mean the one on the corner of the common, not on the mall?
Yeah, the, before the ground freezes, that would be the time to get that out.
Mm-hmm.
Which sign is that? You might not know about that.
There is a wood, there's a pressure-treated lumber sign on the northwest corner of the common, diagonally opposite from the library.
Okay.
And it is south of Central Street. So, you've got the common, Central Street, and then what we call the hall.
It's right across from the Unitarian church.
Birthday cake's on the mall section.
Okay.
And this is on the northwest corner, along Route one forty-eight, almost across the street from the Unitarian Universal Church.
Okay. And you want that removed?
Yep.
Yes.
At any time?
Yes.
At your leisure?
Yes, when, again, when conditions and schedule permit. So, it's not, it's not, it's not a rush job, but when the, when the opportunity presents, if you can, let's get the guys out there.
Okay, you got it. And just to give you an update on the storm cleanup, because it was pretty, it was pretty messy out there. We've had road closures, trees down on Long Hill, Gay Road, Town Farm, Weber, which we're all out, all out working, cutting trees up, removing them. If the chief of police was here, I'd certainly thank him very much for his support, because he backed us up. We had to go up to Gay Road like three times for trees that blocked the road. A big one behind the school that just covered the whole road. So, Mike and I actually went up and cut that up and removed it and put it all. In the process of cleaning all the debris that's around town, a lot of storm drains have to be cleaned off because of the debris that went with the rain. We got about three inches of rain in this storm that was already saturated from the storm before. So, we've been, we've been working on that. They're still picking up the stuff. We're working on to do also with the storm on East Main. There's some, some pretty good rutting that happened on that, so we're mixing some material now to spread and fill in those rutting, ruts, excuse me, on the dirt section of the road. So, actually, not only the rain and the wind itself that did the damage, but it's almost a constant battle. I've got a guy out now that treating, treating some of the roads. I just got called by dispatch before I came down here. So, with the warm temperature in the daytime and the freezing at night and the runoff, the saturation of the ground, the country drainage in a lot of sections of town just doesn't work. Because it was too much. It doesn't work. There was just too much, and it just came back into the road. And I know, you all know that. You know the drill. Other problems we've had, and I've seen, water from people's property coming down across the roads and icing up. So, we're doing the best we can to make sure that the road stays safe. Had a big issue down on Quavo, obviously, as you probably know, North Pond, that was flooded. We didn't have to close the road, but we had to close a lane of it and treat it. I saw some of the houses with the water just right up the hill. It was terrible. So, anyway, we're on top of that. And the other thing that I've been looking at is the expenditures, the budget expenditures for the highway department. And I'm kind of pleased that we are below, that doesn't include this warrant. I don't have that yet. But we'll still be below the fifty percent of expenditures for the end of December. Except for the seasonal employee, but we have to keep an eye on that. So, the budget's in good shape. It's below the fifty percent, like I say. I always keep an eye on that. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
We're doing okay for fuel?
Doing okay for fuel. Yeah, we've got prices coming in. We did have somebody come down and look at the fuel system. Do have a more, a modern, I guess, if you will, accountable for fuel system there. So, lockable key fob per vehicle, registered to an employee, usually by the, you know, a four-digit security code. And all into a new computer system, because that computer system we have there is just defunct. It just doesn't, it just doesn't work. And we shouldn't just have a padlock on our diesel pumps. We should have a system, a more secure system. We did have, talked to the fire chief. He believes that our above-ground storage tanks are okay, and they're double-walled, and we'll be able to keep them there instead of buying new tanks, which are very costly. So, hopefully, we'll just have to get some software and some, some new equipment for a better fuel system. But yeah, yeah, fuel's good. Equipment's good. We've, because we haven't had any snow, we've been exercising the equipment, so we've all taken the heavies out and did our roots, if you will. So, getting used to my tri-colored truck, so I like that. So, we've all done that, and we, I keep them exercised. I don't like things just sitting stagnant. You gotta keep them moving. The guys are on top of the equipment with the fluids, the greasing, everything. So, I'm really, I'm very pleased of the knowledge they have with the equipment we have in the garage. And also, obviously, with the town. They've been very helpful, cooperative, and responsive. They're right there. If I need them, they're there, and we work well together, so. That's it.
Okay. Hold on. One question for Gary. Hold on, hold on. All right, so, let's see, so, I guess the, Richard raising his hand distracted me, sorry. Do you guys have any questions while I collect my thoughts?
No, I talked to him today and yesterday. I'm pretty much to date.
Okay. And then, I guess the, I guess the question is, is that, it's like, have you been getting out there with the guys?
Yes. Yes, I was cutting trees with Mike, cleared roads with Mike. We cleaned, cleaned a lot of the debris, or some of the debris, not a lot, with Eric. So, I have been getting out there and working with them. Have been doing, the first couple of weeks, actually, was just research, just to see where we were as a town, to become familiar with the turf and the people, getting to know the employees better in that type of setting. And obviously, I drove, had Mike driving around the separate plow routes and saw routes and so on and so forth to show me them. I do have them in print, and then I would, took the truck out to see what the obstacles were, if any, because my truck would be the truck with the wing. So, I'm very familiar with the route. Like, when I exercise the truck, I exercise it on that route, so. I have been getting out with the guys. Been down to the pit several times, so.
And how about like the private roads, the dirt?
Yeah, I've been up Pine. So, actually, I was up Pine today. There's some issues up at Pine. I've been up to, actually, I had, I had to go up to Lane twenty-one. Lane twenty-one was blocked with a tree, so I went up and just cut it myself and then put it off to the side of the road, so. But those are all private, I believe. All the lane, the numbered lanes are all private, correct? So, yeah, I've, I've seen them. I've seen some of the needs of work. So, they're gonna be tough to plow, so.
Thank you. One sec. Given, Richard, Mr. Chapey has indicated a desire to ask Gary a question, and I want to consult with the board, because before we open the can of worms, if we allow Mr. Chapey to ask this question, then I think that sets precedent and opens it up to the entire floor.
It does.
Is that, is that, is that something we are interested in? Is that a can we're interested in opening tonight, or is that something that we should, that we feel we want to defer?
If it makes the board go through the three small questions, Gary, and it's just a, it's just a small suggestion for the, you know, it's such a joke.
Oh.
I'll go through the board if you prefer.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you had a question. If you would, let's see. Is this something you could just make directly to Gary and then just let us know what you suggested to him? And that way, it's not, that way, it's not done officially through the meeting?
The one thing I noticed is the trucks haven't been fluid filmed as of yet. I go there, the things have?
Oh, okay. I thought, no, 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 I was asking, can you, can you, can you make that suggestion to him directly? And then just let us know what you suggested?
Outside of the meeting?
Yeah, outside of the meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, Gary, if you could touch base with Richard?
Sure, certainly.
That would be good. That way?
Certainly, no problem.
Yeah, but that way, but Richard, thank you for your, for your concern and your attention to these things. All right. All right, let's see, so, I think we're all set with Gary?
Okay, thank you very much. I wish you a Merry Christmas, all. Merry Christmas, before I leave the table. If you don't mind, I'd like to sit here and?
Oh, I do, I do have one minor issue.
Yes?
So, you have much bigger projects to worry about, but back probably two or three years ago, we had a survey done for handicap accessibility, and it wasn't just buildings. It included like roads and sidewalks and that sort of thing. One thing I noticed is a byproduct of the Central Street project is that the sidewalk that runs from the congregational church down to the library, the area just south of where Central Street runs.
Okay.
The slope of that sidewalk went from something that was at least close to compliant to very non-compliant from a standpoint of slope. So, if we can at least just put it in the backlog of things to take a look at and see if it can get incorporated into some future road project or see if maybe we can get some grant money for handicap accessibility and take a look at a number of the sidewalks through town to get them compliant from a standpoint of rise over run and all that.
Sure.
It would be good, because once we get some snow and we get some icing conditions, that's gonna turn into a, not just a handicap accessibility issue, but a?
Gotcha.
It's gonna be a ski job, isn't it?
Yeah, pretty much. So, we can just add it to the honeydew list. That would be great. So.
Thank you. And as I was saying, Merry Christmas to all. If you don't mind, I'd like to sit, as you will, with the next, just, this is the discussion for the next agenda item.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, but Merry Christmas to all. Gary?
Thank you.
All right, the next agenda item is the permanent highway supervisor candidate search. I just, I mostly wanted to bring this up, not to discuss the candidates, but to make sure that the board was, had hashed out how it wanted to move forward. The municipal resources, I believe, is the company we contracted?
Yep.
Is, has, has recommended two candidates to us. And is, my thought is, is that, given that, do we want to proceed directly to interviewing them in a, as final candidates in open session? Or do we want to have an executive session to discuss this before we go to open session interviews? Yeah, I just, I didn't, it's like, since this is something we all have to decide, I thought it was something that we needed to cover in a meeting, rather than me saying, oh, I think this is what we all want.
Let's see here. So, did they give us any statistics on how many applications they got that they filtered for the two candidates that they're recommending we interview?
I, I did not see any. My understanding is they, they received X applications. They, I will say, seriously considered four and are passing two of them on for our, and they've shared the details of all four, and they've said, these are the two we think are the best.
Okay, so they've shared the details of all four, and then they've got two candidates for us to?
Yes.
Were the two candidates that they recommended in that email? Because I saw, I saw the list of the four candidates.
Yes, they were. At the very end, it listed the two that they wanted to do. The two that they recommended we consider. But my thought is, if we want, if we want to, if we want to think about those four or anything else, my thought is, we don't need an executive session to have that discussion.
Yeah, I think we could, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I'd be happy if we just took the recommendations from MRI and interviewed them at the next available open session.
My thinking is, if it turns out those two, if we decide they're not the right fit, we can always go back and ask MRI for more recommendations and we have an executive session to window down additional candidates.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with that. I just wanted to make sure we all agreed, this is how we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Brad?
Yep.
All right, then, okay. All right, I'll work with, I'll work with Karen to contact MRI and let the, let them know that we're interested in interviewing the, their two recommended candidates and that we'll probably try and bring them into one of the January meetings. Just given it's the holidays, I'm expecting it will be the second one in January, the third week. The eighteenth, I believe. I think it'll be the eighteenth.
Yeah, I'm fine.
And I think we have the Town Hall Improvement Committee on there and the Council of Aging. We might have to push them out.
No, that's gonna be February second.
Oh, that, okay. That Town Hall and Council of Aging already got pushed out to February? Okay, then we should be able to have space on the agenda for the eighteenth then. And if not, we'll make space, because this is something I don't want to leave sitting.
Well, I was gonna say, if we need to do an off-cycle, one in order to have room on the calendar, I'm okay with the third meeting in January.
Okay.
Second meeting. Because we're what, first and third week typically?
Typically, first and third, yeah. We'll see what their availability is.
And there's nothing on the agenda for the fourth, so why not just try to do it the first meeting right after the holiday?
Oh, there's nothing on the agenda yet? I'm not sure, I'm open to that. I'm not, I'm not sure that, given that people are going into the holidays, I'm not sure that they would be able to make themselves available. But if we can do it, we do it. given that people are going into the holidays, I'm not sure that they would be able to make themselves available, but if we can do it, we do it.
Well, let's, let's find out. Let's find out if we can get them scheduled for the fourth.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good, I'm, I'm good with doing, with having them in on the fourth.
Can always push it. It's harder to pull it in.
All right, Karen, are you in next week? Okay, then, uh, could, could you reach out to, uh, municipal resources on, uh, actually, yeah, could, uh, on Tuesday, if you could reach out to them and, uh, ask them to, uh, notify the candidates and, uh, see if they are available. And, uh, I expect you're going to want to interview both candidates at the same time, so if only one's available, then we're not going to have either one in that day.
All right.
So, and, and try and get them in. If, if they, if we're having trouble getting it to work on a regularly scheduled meeting, then let's aim for, let's aim for an off-scheduled meeting. Find a time they can come in and we'll meet with them when we can get them both in together. All right. Anything, anything else on the, uh, candidate search? All right. There we go. And let's see, the night of number three, Long Hill Solar Array. Uh, we haven't heard back from Town Council, so we are going to defer this to when we have expert legal advice. Uh, and number four, um, the license for radio station antenna, um, Sharon has, uh, Apple Country Radio has asked that we, um, defer this to, uh, to our next meeting, um, as they, uh, they were, they're, they haven't had a chance to review it yet and so they're not ready for the meeting. I hope I got that right, Sharon. It's, 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 at, at their request, we're deferring it. Is that a fair sta- okay. That's a fair statement. All right. All right, so now, something we can actually do, the Ocomberin Victualler's license. So Karen, whatever kept them off the agenda last, last time has been sorted out?
Yes.
All right, then I will take a motion to sign the Victualler, Victualler's license for Ocomberin Company.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor of signing the Victualler's license for Ocomberin Company, uh, for twenty twenty-four, please say aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, next up, we have the Contract with Central Mass Regional Planning Committee for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, um, Grant Management Contract. Where we contract out to them to manage this grant for us.
Mm-hmm.
And I was going to say, and everything seemed to be in order. Uh, have you guys had a chance to look at the contract?
Yeah.
Enough? Okay. And then, uh, let's see. Uh, Karen, do you know how much the, the, do you know what the total amount of the grant was?
I don't know. Look at the cover letter. Does it have something on that?
Part of the contract.
I just didn't see how much the, I didn't see how much in, I didn't catch how much the grant was, but I was, there were a lot of pages and I was skimming.
I don't know. I don't know what the grant is.
Their grant, but they, do they have a fixed grant? Do they have a fixed mention?
I believe it's a percentage. I believe.
But is it fixed for all the grants?
The pers- I believe, I don't know. I don't know.
Okay.
They've been doing this for several, if not more, years and.
Yeah. Yeah, no, part, part of it's just now, now that I'm, now that I am involved in this, I'm just trying to get a little smarter about it. And so, that's all. It's like, it's not hard. All right. Now, I don't see a point in holding this up, so I will take a motion to sign the, uh, the, uh, contract with, uh, CMRPC.
I'm going to make a motion to sign the contract with CMRPC for FY twenty-two, twenty-three CDBG Grant Management Contract.
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of signing the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, Karen, this requires a witness signature. Uh, can Brad sign that?
Yes.
All right. Can you be my witness, please?
Gary also has to sign.
Yeah. If Lori's in next week, she can sign it next week. Otherwise. What's that? She's out next week? Yeah, I'd, I'd have been surprised if she came in. They go pass that to Karen. She will need that.
Is, is this time-sensitive? Like, do we need to get somebody else from, uh, Eric Krenshaft's to, to sign it if she's out?
I can look at it and find out.
Okay, yeah, find out if it's, if, if there's some sort of deadline on there that's going to get blown because somebody from her firm can sign for her.
All right, next item of business is, um, right of first refusal for fifty-seven Lake Road. And this is a landlocked property, has no road frontage. And it's. Oh, it's downhill. Oh, it's downhill from Wagon Mile. Okay, just trying to understand. Wait. That's interesting. It's, the address is Lake Road, but the map shows, I guess it's closer to Rice Corn Road.
Yeah, it says that.
Yeah, as I say, that's just, sorry, that's just me being unacceptive. Okay. All right, and there's a note here from Al saying that, um, the location and topography is, his opinion was that it wasn't worth us acquiring and I, I can't think of us having a use for it. So, um, so I will take a motion, uh, to either, uh, I'll take a motion on this one or the other.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we, um, pass on our right of first refusal. Or waive, yeah, waive our right of first refusal.
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion on this matter? All right, uh, all in favor of waiving our right of first refusal regarding the parcel of fifty-seven Lake Road, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so waived. Uh, let's see, number eight, sign.
Do we need to sign anything on that or no?
No, just a vote. No, just send a vote off to the.
Yeah, I, I think once we vote, we notify them that we've waived it and then they can, then they can just say, okay, they're, they're not exercising it. We're moving on with what we'd rather do anyway.
Got it.
All right, and ADCC renewal form for fiscal year, for calendar year twenty-four.
That's just saying that all of the, uh, liquor licenses renewed, that we didn't deny anyone or, I mean, we didn't want to renew it. So it's really nothing.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is just a list of those that we either, um, who, people who had licenses that decided they didn't want to renew it and those whose licenses we said, we don't want to renew it. And there's nobody on that list, so this is basically telling them, there's no one, there's no one in that club. So, um, so I will take a motion to sign the, uh, renewal certification, uh, for calendar year twenty-four.
You have that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor of, uh, signing the renewal certification, um, as shown here with, uh, no, with, uh, no licenses listed as either failed to renew or disapproved, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, Karen, does, does everyone in the board need to sign here?
This can orange, yes.
All right. All right, agenda item number nine, cultural council appointment, um, Amy and Brandon Vogel.
I'll make a motion to appoint Amy and Brandon Vogel to the cultural council for a three-year term.
A second.
Well, usually we just, um, appoint them until June thirtieth, uh, until June, the next, the next cycle of appointments. So you do it June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. That's what's on the appointments. Look, I know that Mr. Simpson did request a three-year term, but, you know, did, well, we point, we point again in June.
Okay, so, so I'll retract that motion and make a motion to, um, appoint them through the end of the year.
End of the fiscal year?
Yeah, end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Second.
All right, um, all, uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor of appointing, uh, Amy and Brandon Vogel to the cultural council, um, uh, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for volunteering. We need all the help we can get.
And you can maybe get sworn in by the town clerk.
Yes, and you get to learn about open meeting law.
Aren't you lucky?
And forums. Oh, it's so much fun. All right, and let's see. All right, agenda item number ten, approved select board minutes for November ninth, twenty eighteen, and November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes from eleven-nine eighteen and eleven-twenty-eight twenty-three.
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes for those two dates listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, acknowledge the, uh, I've got something here that says sign here, but I'm not expecting it. Oh, sorry, we have to sign the, uh, appointments. And that's, uh, and that's signed by the clerk, so. I'm so glad you put those signees here, Karen. Catching my attention. Mic's all cut up on each police report, so.
Yeah.
All right, uh, let's see, so now that's agenda eleven, acknowledged police reports for September, October, and November twenty twenty-three. Uh, so I'll take a motion?
Make a motion to acknowledge the police department reports for nine twenty-three, ten twenty-three, and eleven twenty-three.
Second.
All right, all in favor of acknowledging those reports, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right, and acknowledge the, uh, highway report for eleven twenty-three. Uh, let's see, so there we go.
Uh, make a motion to acknowledge the highway report for eleven twenty-three.
Second.
All right, all in favor of acknowledging the highway report for, uh, November twenty twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll take a motion to adjourn less than forty-five minutes after our start.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Aye. Just made it. Just turned seven o'clock.